We are recording. I'm just waiting for PAC to say we're live and then we will go. Okay, we are live. Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020's Lunenburg Select Board Meeting. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent its spread. And all the town facilities are open by appointment only. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after its conclusion. The following information is also from members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting remotely. You can join by using your computer, phone, tablet, or any other smart device. Using the Zoom application, the webinar ID for this Zoom meeting is 909-174-0347. If you do not have a smart device or unable to use it and would wish to use the telephone, you may do so by dialing 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is 909-174-0347. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. So, as this is a remote meeting, this is a roll call open. I will call on the members of the board as I see them in the Zoom window. Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Jeffries.
Present.
Mr. Marino.
Present.
And I am present, and we have Madam Town Manager.
Present.
Before we begin, only because time is of the essence, for those who may have been in a coma or living under a rock today as election day, if you have not already voted, the polls are open for 56 more minutes. So go to
I gotta run.
Go to the TC Pacio's building and go vote if you haven't already done so. If you have done so, thank you for participating in the process. And I do want to give a special shout out to the town manager and all the volunteer workers and her staff who did, I think, an excellent job. When I went to vote there today, everything was well organized. They had people directing, they had everybody really spaced, even two precincts were in one area, the other two precincts in another one. It was really first rate, great job, and I really take my hat off to them in making this safe for everybody. All right, I will hand it over to our Pledge of Allegiance leader, Ms. Adams. Let me, before you begin, let me admit the two people who are waiting here. And, okay, take it away.
So my trusty flag is missing, but luckily I have spares. So here we are. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, any public comment from the board this evening? I should say that please familiarize yourselves. I know the board is, but know where the raise your hand function is with Zoom. And I will call on people if you do not have a Zoom application on your smartphone or computer or tablet, and you are calling in by phone to raise your hand on the phone, you dial *9, and I will call people in the order that I see them at the appropriate time. So, Ms. Adams.
Sure, I just wanted to check with you. I have a public comment from a citizen that they asked me to read. I can read it now during board comment or raise my hand again during.
You have the floor, so why not now?
So this is a citizen, she's inquired before. Selectman Marino will recognize it. She's just facing further frustration with the road she's on. So I'll read it. "Good evening, my name is Deborah Metcalf Morris. I live at 43 West Townsend Road. I live there with my husband Clifford Morris. We moved to this address back in 2005 after looking quite a while for the perfect home. I fell in love with this house immediately. I've always lived in Colonials and this was perfect. After living here a bit, I realized that my road was a cut through. Okay, I can live with that until Holman Street got closed to through traffic. Well, that means everything that used to go down that street now comes down west Townsend Road, so the traffic has doubled. That's not even the worst of it. There are several problems on the little country road. The number one is speeding. The number two is the tractor trailers and fully loaded dump trucks that are also speeding. There's no speed signs. And I'm sitting here with my house probably 10 feet off the road today, November 3rd, with constant dump trucks flying by my house. In the summertime, I can't open my front windows because of the diesel smell that comes into them. I cannot safely walk to my local farm stand, never mind with the dog. It's not safe. I follow these tractor trailers and dump trucks from the center of town down Highland, turning onto Northfield, and turning right onto West Townsend Road to Route 13. My opinion is they have no business being on the tiny small country roads that we pay taxes for. Throughout the years, I have called the police on speeders. I've asked that they run radar. And in respect to them, I can't prove if they, and with respect to them, I can't prove that if they haven't. I have, when I have company, it's not safe for them to park anywhere when my driveway is full. We can be sitting outside on my lawn, and when the trucks come, we have to stop talking because we can't hear each other. Most of the time, the remark is, oh my God, do they always go this fast down your road? I was told there were studies that were going to be going on, so that just be patient. And I have been patient, and I'm losing my patience. I've noticed that Highland has gone from 30 miles an hour to 25, but I feel like West Townsend has been forgotten. My suggestion would be, did we not allow trucks, not allow trucks down the little country roads? Let them stay on 2A and travel 13. And if that seems impossible, then the second suggestion would be to make the short end of West Townsend one way. That won't be my favorite, but that would keep the trucks from being a cut through. And because it doesn't look like the bridge on Holman will be repaired anytime soon. And she said, lucky them. I appreciate people taking the time to listen, and I hope there's something that could be done about it. Because I love living in this house and I love Lunenburg. To be quite honest with you, if I knew this road was going to be like this, I probably wouldn't have bought this home that I have loved for all these years. Sincerely, Deborah Metcalf Morris." And so, you know, I don't know what's being done and if the police department, you know, could be reached out to with any updates. But I know we've been talking about these little cut-through roads for a while, and I just wanted to share her letter.
Thank you.
I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Not if I'd like, if you'd like.
Anything that could have been done over the last several years has been done. There was a study done, the DOT refuses to acknowledge that there's enough truck traffic on Antedemon a road that eliminates truck traffic. The town of Townsend would not engage, which they would have to in order for us to get a truck exclusion. The city of Leominster wouldn't engage, all because their concern is that if we stop the truck traffic on these secondary roads, that'll increase the traffic on the main county roads like Route 13 and 119. Very frustrating situation for me. I'm still fighting that fight. Brad over at MRPC is still working on it, trying to come up with a resolution. Probably will be none for West Townsend. There might be for Highland and Main Street and Northfield. And that small stretch of West Townsend that goes between Northfield and Chase Road, because that doesn't include the town of Townsend. The other side does, because the road goes into Townsend and intersects with 119. And it's a requirement that they be involved because of that fact, because you have to provide an alternate route, which would be 119. And they already opted out. So then the city of Leominster, I was trying to get them to agree to allow truck exclusion on Day Street and Leominster Road. So a very frustrating situation. We haven't been sitting on our hands at all with this situation. The current chief is fully aware of what I did and will continue to fight that fight. But I think without some support from the DOT, without a correct count, truck count down there, I don't think we're going to get anywhere. So I fully sympathize with Mrs. Metcalf 100% and all the rest of the residents down in our neighborhood that have been complaining about it for years and complaining legitimately about it.
Thank you for providing the context for her. I think, you know, it makes sense that she's frustrated, but I think it always feels better when people know that someone cares or somebody's trying. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comment from the board? That was redundant, but. Any public comment from the public? Mr. McDonald. Let's try to unmute you. There you go.
There we go. Mr. McDonald, I'm not. Michael Knoll, 56 Brookview Terrace in Lunenburg. I'm here to report on the success of Lopsters for Lunenburg. It was very successful. Like, we finally got our final numbers, and I'd just like everybody to know how we did. First of all, the volunteers, want to thank all the volunteers. We couldn't have done it without you. There was a lot, a lot of work on this one, and the sponsors, thank you very much. The final numbers came in at $9,807.80. And also a picnic table donated by Mackey Lumber. So we're going to call it $10,000 in donations. And we served 190 lobster dinners altogether. And I might say without, not one complaint, nobody, nobody had a complaint on them. Everybody loved the meals. So thank you very much, and just wanted to check in and let you guys know how everything went, so.
Excellent. Thank you. The meal was wonderful, and it's nice to know that it went to a great cause for the Police and Firefighters Association, so thank you. Any other public, oh, raise your hand now. Look at this.
Hand again.
The real Dave McDonald stands up.
Yeah, Dave McDonald, Island Road in Lunenburg. Good evening all, and again, Mr. Alonso, I have to agree with you 100% Kathy, and the people down at the polls did a great job today, absolutely great. Everybody felt safe and the lions kept moving, and it was very good. The reason why I'm on here tonight is for the Salvation Army. As you guys know, I've been supporting the Salvation Army now for 35 years. This year couldn't be the most important year of our lives, and I say that literally. It's very tough out there today, as you all well know. Our number one priority right now is to help families in need. What I want to do is that we're going to be doing a promotion, and I think, Mr. Alonso or Heather, I sent you guys a flyer. I don't know if you received that, and I don't know if you could put it up or not. I'm going to turn it over to our boss, which is Anvey Lynette Valentine from the Salvation Army. And if you could take a few moments and Lynette can explain what we're doing, that would be great. And Lynette, after
Hold on one second. Madam Town Manager, do you have the flyer available? Oh, hold on.
Thank you.
Where are you? Where are you? There you are. Asked to unmute. There you go. Do you have it?
I'm working on pulling it up.
Okay, go ahead, Lynette. Well, let me unmute you. There you go.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm on Voilant at Valentine with Salvation Army, and, you know, as Dave said, the need is greater than ever this year. It's always a challenge with the Thanksgiving and Christmas effort every year in the Red Kettle Campaign. But this year, there's going to be, we see a decrease in 50% of funding, and we also see an increase of 155% of people in need, and those numbers are coming in. As of today, the phones are ringing and we're seeing that incline. So what we've decided as the Salvation Army, not just locally, but on a national chapter, is to rescue Christmas. And they put it out for all of the local chapters, Salvation Army, to come up and think outside of the box, and how can we make this happen? And between myself and the board and the staff at the Salvation Army Pittsburgh, serving Pittsburgh, Leominster, and Lunenburg, we came up with the idea of a holiday parade. Not the parade that we typical would stand on the side of the road and watch, but more or less a visual. And that's with our Salvation Army EDS fleet, with our, with the fire and the police and the military. What we're going to do is do a holiday parade, starting in Pittsburgh. We will go to the Upper Common, come back down on Water Street, and we have a military vehicle stationed where people can buy gifts between 8:00 AM and noon and drop them off at those stations. And then the military vehicle will join the parade as we pass by each location. And the locations are Upper Common, Pittsburgh, Utz Potato Chips, Leominster, Pittsburgh Elks, Leominster Monument Square, Lunenburg Town Square, United Way on John Fitch. Ending the parade convoy visual of the Salvation Army and a community coming together to rescue Christmas, to provide toys for the kids in need. There really truly is a need, and there are people who normally gave who are asking for help. So we really are looking forward to this visual, coming together in unity as three communities, serving these families, and making sure that Christmas will happen for the children.
And we did, we did find the PDF, which the town manager is now showing. And I appreciate you, so everybody, where will this be? I see the website is at the bottom there. SalvationArmyMA.org/TreeOfLights, so please write that down.
So, Mr. Alonso, it's very important that people know that we have a week until this event. And if you can get a toy and drop it off at one of our locations in Lunenburg, working with the police department, and we're going to be using School Street by the Ritter as our drop-off point. We'll be setting up sign, we'll be putting a sign up there sometime this week. And then we're going to be setting up the military vehicles next Saturday at 8:00. So if someone can come by, drop off a toy, and then at noon time or a little bit after in Lunenburg, I think we're expected to hit Lunenburg around 1:00, Lynette, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. Around 1:00, 1:15, the parade will make its way into Lunenburg.
Now, we are looking to have Santa on the back of one of the fire trucks from either Pittsburgh, Leominster, or Lunenburg, so he can wave to the children. This year, I want to put a plea out there and a challenge that the people who know me know that I'm very caring when it comes to the kids at Christmas. And this year, we've been whacking our brains out. How are we going to get Santa? These kids this year is going to be tough to see a Santa. So anything we can do to help a child, I'll be there. And I hope most of the people in town would also be there to help our kids, not only in Lunenburg, but in the community. So we pray that people will get together, realize how important this is, help us and join us. And I can't be more proud than the Lunenburg Police and Fire Department for, we asked them about this idea, and they said, what can we do and when can we be there? So thank you to all the people in red and blue, you guys come through again. So again, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you all for your help, including this board who's helped us in the past, and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Thank you, Ms. Valentine. You know, we will do that. Are you guys, is it just toys? Can people give gift cards in case they can't get out?
Right, you can make donations, discard, you can make gift cards. We're going to have a kettle at each of the military vehicles, so if they'd like to make a donation and drop it in the kettle, this is again our kickoff for our Red Kettle Campaign, and the need is great. So if they can't buy a toy and they'd like to make a donation or contribute to the Red Kettle Campaign, the kettles will be available there as well.
Excellent.
And the last thing, Mr. Alonso, would be, we will be coming to this board in another week or so. We applied for a boot drive application. I think I sent notification to most of you, I don't know if you received the email or not.
Yep.
But again, we're going to be following all the safety protocols set out there by you guys. And I think we got everything covered on the email I sent out. But we are doing new things, and at the center of town, if you want to drop off, we will have a red kettle there. And again, our kettles are very limited this year because of the COVID-19. You're not going to see a spell ring in front of a lot of these stores because of that. So we have this, I don't know if you guys have a saw this, I don't know if you can see it. It's a QR code. Can you guys make that up?
Yes. It's a QR.
QR code, okay. At the center of town on our signage, we'll have that there. It's also going to be on our vehicles, including mine. So if you pass one of these, you can put your phone and make a donation. But again, it's very difficult, and with your help, I know we can reach our goals and at least help every child in the community. And again, thank you for that.
Thank you, and keep up the good work they're doing. I appreciate it.
A couple of weeks, too.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're leaving, bye.
All right. Any other public comment from the public? Okay, seen none. Announcements, just, just a couple. So for those people who may already know that Route 70 is closed as you go over that overpass of Route 2, we have gotten word that the estimated time of repair to that is in the range of four months. That is the latest word we've gotten from the people working on that and from, I think we got it from Monticic directly, so, however unfortunate, plan on that being four months before you'll be able to cross that bridge again. One other, two other announcements. First, one of the other things that is not happening because of the pandemic is the official passing of the Boston Post cane. For those who don't know, the Boston Post cane is given to the oldest person in Lunenburg. Actually, it's given to every municipality and the Commonwealth does this. We happen to have one of the original Boston Post canes. It no longer goes directly to the recipient, but it is an honorary passing of the cane. And unfortunately, because of the pandemic, we weren't able to do this in person, but I want to tell you about who the recipient is. So the newest recipient after the previous Boston Post cane recipient passed away last year, the new recipient is Agnes Pierce. She will be 101 in February. From what I was given as a background, she was born in Lowell, and she waited for a husband to come back from World War II, and they got married in 1945. She was active in the Women's Auxiliary Club. And she had three children. They've lived in several places on the Cape, Westminster, and Florida, and then came back to live here with her daughter Patty in Lunenburg 10 years ago. She has five grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. She lived in Leominster for much of that time as well, and worked as a lab technician at Foster Grant for 19 years. She loved to take trips with her husband in the car and camper to Fitzwilliam and the White Mountains and took many cruises. We're sorry to her and her family that we're not able to pass this along at this time in person, but I wanted to honor her by giving that little bio and at the earliest convenience that we can do this safely. I know that the Council on Aging will put together a small ceremony so that we can honor her in public, in a public event. So thank you and congratulations, Ms. Pierce. Lastly, I wanted to acknowledge, last Friday was the last day of our DPW Director, Jack Rogergins. After 20 years of service here as the DPW Director, and many years before that, I believe, as part of the Highway Department, he leaves behind a very great legacy. First of all, he was the first and up till now only DPW Director Lunenburg has ever known, when the DPW was formed back in 2000, 2001. And has a lot of accomplishments to his credit, you know, everything from the pavement management plans and the Summer Street revitalization, where he was critical in doing that, was instrumental in helping install the sewer plan and work with the Sewer Commission and the Sewer Department, obviously in charge of all the parks and with the Cemetery Commission under him as well, has done all of the maintenance for the town buildings are under him, all of the road maintenance, pothole recovery, pothole fixing, et cetera. And there's many, many more things that I could name here, but we don't have that much time. I do want to say, having gotten to know him all those years, and we call myself a good friend, I want to thank him for all his service for all those years. As I said at his luncheon for him, I said that people come to me and other people on this board and other boards, and they say, oh, it's amazing how you do it. It's a really thankless job. But I would say that the DPW Director is really the thankless job, because it is never a season that something is not constantly in the public eye, whether it's the public roadways, whether it's the parks, whether it's the grass, whether it's stormwater, whether it's drainage, you know, and a host of other things that are under the purview of the DPW. There is something every season to go on, the snow plowing, which goes on for endless cycles on some of the bad storms we get. So I want to wish Jack a very happy retirement. I want to thank him from the bottom of my heart for all of the hard work and all the dedication he provided to Lunenburg for all those years, how selfless he was in doing that. And I wish him all the best in his retirement. Okay. 7:05, as they say, right on time, tax classification hearing. Oh, Ms. Adams. Oh, hold on. There you go.
Okay. I was going to try to raise my hand about Jack.
I said, I'm calling on you.
No, I know. I don't know why I was muted. Um, so I just wanted to add one interesting thing in the context of sort of the thankless part of some of these jobs. And we see it from our meetings, but so many town employees, and of course, we see the town manager at meetings, but there's so many times where they come to a meeting and they're there for 10, 15 minutes, but they're sitting in the audience for three or four hours waiting for the 10 minutes. And I can think of so many late nights where, you know, Jack is sitting there, missing supper, missing family time, you know, waiting for that opportunity to engage with us on a topic. And so I just also wanted to say thank you to Jack and to everybody who's behind the scenes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 7:05, tax classification hearing as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, on the issue of allocating the local property tax levy among the four classes of real and personal property. So who is taking this, Madam Town Manager?
Our principal assessor is here, Sue Byrne.
Okay. I'm going to rename so we can see her full name. And Ms. Byrne, are you there?
Okay, it's not letting me do anything.
There we go. There you go. We can hear you.
Okay, well, it's not letting me share my video, so I guess you don't get to see me.
Hold on, I don't know that I can ask to start the video. How about that?
There we go.
All right, it doesn't look like it's behaving.
Guess not, okay.
That just means you'll have to be extra lively so we make up for the lack of picture.
You know, I'll be glad when we don't have to do this anymore. Okay. So I think you all got my little handout that I did up.
It is on our Google Drive, yes.
Okay, all right. So basically, this is a hearing. Before we can set the tax rate, the Select Board must hold a public hearing each year to consider the tax rate options available. available. This is done where all our values, my assessments have all been approved by the Department of Revenue. And we're so this is to determine whether we will have one tax rate against all, across all four classes, residential, commercial, industrial and personal property, or a split tax rate. So moving on. So the Select Board basically has to look at the percentages and decide whether or not they want to split the levy, split the, share the levy. And as you can see in what I gave you, the residential factor of one, if you vote for that would mean that's one tax rate against all four classes. A split tax rate is usually used when there's more commercial, industrial, i.e. Pittsburgh. We, as you can see on page, going down, one, two, three, four, five. On page five, you will see our residential is 90.9867% of, and our commercial is 4.75, yeah, 4.5748. Our industrial is 1.5478 and our personal property is 2.8907. If you scroll back up to page three, you'll see the maximum share of the levy classes for commercial, industrial, personal property is 150%. So the best we could end up doing, Lunenburg could end up doing with that 150% share would only allow to split the residential to an 86.48%, which really wouldn't end up, when you see further on down, when I get into the levy limit and what needs to be raised for this year. You see, it really doesn't, it would really make the commercial, industrial, personal property go way up and it really wouldn't give much of a difference to the residential. So because we don't have a big commercial, industrial base, that is why the Board of Assessors here in Lunenburg has always historically recommended one tax rate for all four classes of real and personal property. And I just want to kind of touch base on the financial part of everything. For 2021, the levy limit, the maximum allowable levy is 28,899, 90, sorry, 28,896,249. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. And if we look at the June 13th Annual Town Meeting, the appropriations were 40,960,318.77. Now, if all the money articles and the appropriations pass at the November 17th Special Town Meeting, that adds another 1,432,611.59 for total appropriations of 42,392,930.36. And if you go on to the next page, you'll basically see there's the appropriations. We have to add to that the amount that we'll be certifying for tax title purposes. Now, we add in what we're getting, the cherry sheet. That's the cherry sheets offsets, that's what has to be paid, Worcester County, retirement, and the state and cherry sheet charges. Now, these have not been certified by the state as of yet, so we are still using fiscal year 2020 figures there. And then, of course, we have allowances for abatements and exemptions. Total money to be raised, 45,274,832.36. Okay, so then we pull in what I've gotten from here in our accountant of what's coming in from other revenue sources, local receipts, also cherry sheet receipts. Again, we're still using the 2020 cherry sheet receipt figures. 16,378,582.54, which leaves us a tax levy, what has to be raised through the property taxes and the personal property taxes, real estate and personal property, is 28,896,249.82. And you'll see clearly on the next page that that gives us an excess levy capacity of 2 cents. So going down to my next chat there, you can see how that because the residential has to pick up, the residential properties are actually paying 90.9867% of that tax levy that we have to raise. And, you know, that's where it's at. And my next pages just go on to, I just got a chat there explaining or showing where the excess tax levy has been going for the last 11 years. And just some personal, some information down there, just showing you where the assessments are going, residential properties, which is your single-family homes and condos and your, any, we don't have a lot of multifamilies, two families, three families or multifamilies here. An increase of 5.48% in assessment. Commercial went up a little bit, industrial went up very little, personal property went up a little bit. And then basically showing my LE4, which is the real estate values by class and my personal properties by class. And then going on to show, I always like to include my top 10 taxpayers in the town. So you get an idea where, you know, the bulk of where, well, where the good taxpayers are. And then going on to show where the average single-family home has gone for anybody who's not been aware, despite COVID and businesses hurting, the real estate market is crazy. And it continues to be crazy. And people are trying to get out of the cities and into the country and get their own homes. So they're still paying top dollar a lot of times more than asking price. So and so we're looking at tentatively, as I said, cherry sheet has not been finalized and the tax rate has not obviously been finalized and approved by the DOR, but we're looking around 17.74. And, you know, a little bit there. So that's it. So as I said before, the assessors are recommending, as they have always in the past, one, a factor of one, a tax rate, one's tax rate against all, across all four classes. Any questions?
I'll open it up to the board if anybody has any questions for Ms. Byrne. Any discussion points at all? Mr. Jeffries.
Excuse me, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to just comment on really the last slide that you have in our packet tonight, which is a note about the tax rate and the assessed value over the last five years. And it notes that in the last five years, average single-family home value has increased $84,200 or 31.52% over the past five years. Whereas the average single-family home tax bill has increased $895 or 16.77% over the past five years. So certainly, you know, I think no one likes for taxes to increase, but I think that, you know, the full picture is that we've all received good value over the last several years. Certainly hope that that continues. So thank you for the report and thank you for noting the top taxpayers. That was really interesting information to read. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a written recommended motion. I will, only because it's written here, I will make the motion and then somebody can second. So I move that the board vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property, relative to setting the fiscal year 2021 tax rates and set the residential factor at 1.0 with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.0, pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Do we have a second? Was that you, Mr. Jeffries?
Yes, second.
Okay. So any further discussion on this? This will set the tax rate as one single rate, a uniform rate across all classes as Ms. Byrne presented. There are no more, I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Sorry, and an aye from me. So it's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Byrne. You don't have to be so nervous next time. Most of us are really harmless.
I was gonna say, new board, I've done this a lot of times, but a new board.
No, no, I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay, 7:20, a hearing on 250 Howard Street, right of first refusal and vote to accept portion of property as conservation land and sign a tripartite agreement. I'm glad I got to say tripartites in public.
Yeah, that's fancy.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so Madam Town Manager, I'll hand it over to you and I'm sure you're going to involve Town Council.
Town Council was the one to draft this agreement that the board has for all parties to sign, the seller, the buyer, the town. And both the buyer and the seller have signed the agreement so far. So the town and the chair on behalf of the board would be the one to sign this agreement at the board's so votes to move forward with this. So it's written up as far as conveyance of the land and what the obligations of all parties are, including that as part of it, the town would waive the first right of refusal and would sign that first right of waiving that right, a first refusal within 10 days of signing this agreement. This would convey the portion of the land to be donated to conservation, which can be a vote at a separate meeting. And after town meeting, that vote is taken. And if this, in the event this ever fell through, the agreement between the buyer and seller, the whole first right of refusal process would have to go back into effect. So that clock would restart and the town would have the opportunity to purchase the property through that same.
Beside the board, Madam Town Manager, do we have any guests that are here to speak to this?
We have.
There's some people I don't recognize.
Mrs. Newcomb is here on behalf of the buyers.
Buyer, yeah, okay.
And I do not see someone on behalf of the seller and Mr. Kibbe is here for open space.
Okay. If there's anybody else who's here, who we're not naming, who wants to speak on this, please let me know visually or somehow. Otherwise, I'll open it up to the board. Did everybody get a chance to read the agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll open it up to discussion. So Ms. Adams.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I think this is exciting in the sense that it was, you know, there's so many different parties involved, municipality, buyers and sellers, and it seems like a compromise was made where everybody, you know, gets something positive about it. So I think it was a cool process. So thank you to everybody who's involved in it.
Any other board members have any questions about this? Questions, support, objection? Anything? Don't leave us hanging.
I would go on to add support for it because I supported waiving the right of first refusal, you know, in its entirety. And in this case, everybody worked together to make sure that different people's outcomes were met. So I certainly support what's here because, you know, I would support doing it even without gaining municipal land.
Good. Thank you.
I'd just like to ask, Ms. Newcomb. Not sure the gentleman's name.
You're really low, Jim.
Right, I'd just like to ask, I guess it's Dan Newcomb's, if they're satisfied with the agreement?
Yes, we are.
All right. And Brandon, you're satisfied?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
Seeing all the parties are satisfied, I agree with Ms. Adams. I think this is kind of the, it's the best of both worlds, the best outcome we could hope for, I think. So I support this as well.
Okay. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I know this is exciting for Ms. Newcomb and Mr. Normandin. This has probably been a really stressful last couple of months, but I certainly expect that we will have no problem passing this today and getting to a favorable resolution for everyone.
And I myself, I read through it. I think it sufficiently covers everybody involved to keep people true to the deal that was made and I also support it. So Madam Town Manager, what do we need?
You would have to vote to not exercise your right of first refusal, so essentially waive your first right of refusal and to sign the agreement, the tripartite agreement.
So we want to vote to accept the agreement. That's what we're looking to, right?
Primary that first and then also vote to not exercise your first right of refusal.
Doesn't the agreement already do that second part? Doesn't the agreement say that we're waiving it?
It does, but there's a, will be a separate document that you have to sign within 10 days. It's your standard first, your waiver form.
Is there an order we need to do these in?
I would do.
I want to make sure we get this right.
I would do the tri-party agreement first and then.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion regarding the acceptance of the tripartite agreement.
I move to accept the tripartite agreement.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Adams?
Further discussion, this is my first tripartite agreement. And so I.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself, so it is unanimous. And now you want, now, Madam Town Manager, we need to waive our right of first refusal, right?
Correct.
So I entertain a motion of waiving the right of first refusal regarding the property at 250 Howard Street.
Sure, I make a motion that we waive our right of first refusal for 250 Howard Street.
Do I have a second?
You're welcome.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for me. All right, we're on our way.
And Mr. Chair.
Ms. Adams?
Before we go completely on our way, I have a thought for another motion, just to close up loose ends. Are we able to make any type of motion that as a board we pass over the articles on town meeting? Just so that's sort of part of this.
Not, not in advance. You have to do it because it's part of the warrant now. You got to do it at the town meeting. So we can't preemptively go because the warrant's been printed. Ms. Newcomb, I think you're all set. I think everybody should be in agreement that this, once we get this signed, everybody should be covered and protected and we can get this thing done to everybody's satisfaction. Is there any, any comment you have before we go on to another topic? Okay. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, while we have Mr. Kibbe still here, let's go to seven forty-five, right of first refusal for a chapter sixty-one A property located at three sixty Flat Hill Road, since the season, I guess, for things coming out of chapter. Um, Madam Town Manager, do you want to introduce it, or are you wanting me to hand it over to Mr. Kibbe directly?
Uh, just to note that this is another notice of first, um, refusal for chapter sixty-one land that has been reviewed by the Planning Board, Open Space Committee, and Conservation Commission, uh, which correspondence from the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, which includes discussion, uh, that the Open Space Committee had, is in the Google Drive. Um, and from there, if Mr. Kibbe wants to take over and talk about.
And I should note that the correspondence from the Conservation Commission is that they recommend the board not exercise the town's right of first refusal, so that is what the Conservation Commission voted, and I'll relay to us, uh, on an email of October seventh, so, Mr. Kibbe, welcome back.
Great, thanks. So, uh, the correspondence we had sent along on regarding our conversation on October thirteenth of our committee, uh, was that we had a chance to review, uh, the, the six open space criteria that we've talked about on several occasions in the past, when we consider, uh, these types of, uh, actions that the town has the first right of, first, uh, the right of first refusal for. And, uh, so we looked at those six criteria, and you may remember that, uh, the way the criteria are written is, say, it should be within a priority area, and then if it meets three of those six criteria, that the town should consider, uh, the property for acquisition. So when we looked at the six criteria, the three criteria points that we found that it meets, it are the significant habitats, um, uh, it's actually within a state designated, uh, uh, area of critical environmental concern. Uh, the twenty-two acres is almost entirely comprised of, of, uh, prime agricultural land and, uh, agricultural soils, I should say, and the portion, the very small fraction of the parcel that's not, um, uh, prime agricultural soils is statewide significant agricultural soils, so the entirety of the property is important from an agricultural standpoint, uh, especially given that most of the property is inactive agriculture as it stands, um, you know, there are agricultural soils elsewhere in town that are totally forested, it's not quite as valuable from agricultural standpoint, whereas this parcel is. Uh, and then thirdly, uh, scenic protection, uh, that stretch of Flat Hill Road is a designated scenic, scenic road here in town, and it's actually, the parcel's actually within a statewide designated, uh, uh, noteworthy scenic landscape. So, uh, the, those are the three factors, quite different than other, uh, other properties that, you know, we've typically considered, uh, given that this is principally, you know, of interest from a, from a, uh, community character standpoint and a, uh, agriculture standpoint, um, agriculture is not necessarily a municipal, uh, uh, activity that we engage in, whereas conservation of, of property for natural resources is something that we engage in through the ownership, uh, of lands through Conservation Commission. So not surprising the Conservation Commission actually declined this. Uh, so when we discussed this at our committee, we thought, we, we thought, we were thinking about those three criterias being interesting and important, but also thinking about how, how we would go about conserving a piece of active agricultural land in town in a way that's meaningful, um, especially given the amount of, uh, money that's involved in this particular transaction. So, uh, what, what we had asked, um, uh, in the correspondence back to the Board of Selectmen was to give us a little bit of time under the, under the context of the hundred and twenty day right of first refusal period, to see what options there were. We hadn't really had an opportunity to explore certain options about how we could go about, um, conserving the property. So, that's what we've asked for, uh, uh, for the Board of Selectmen to consider. Uh, we have another meeting scheduled with our committee on November twenty-fourth, when we hope to reconvene on this topic.
When, Madam Town Manager, when did the clock start on the hundred and twenty days on this property? And when is the end date?
So we've, um, Town Council reviewed this application, and since he does not consider this to be a bona fide offer, we have not conceded that, um, start date, because there's a contingency within this agreement. That's our position.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Avini, are you involved in this property?
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you would introduce yourself, please.
Sure, my name's Attorney Jeffrey Avini, I represent the, uh, the purchaser. Um, so, I, I was hoping the Town Council would be on tonight, I, I have not spoken to him. Um, I did see an email correspondence, I think from the admin for the town in relation to that, um, the Town Council has not considered it to be a bona fide offer, and, um, we disagree. Um, I've been using this PNS template, um, on several of these transactions, not only in Loonerburg, but in other towns, and, um, the statute that we are referring to in relation to this process about the right of first refusal, um, does talk about contingencies, and the contingencies they talk about are four or five paragraphs down into the pit, into the statute, and what they talk about is two contingencies, a change in zoning or subdivision. Um, in our PNS, we ask for neither. Uh, we're not seeking any kind of a zoning change, and, and the statute that talks about the subdivision of land is clear that approval not required lots, A and R lots, as they're called, the, the vernacular, is not a subdivision. It's spelled out clearly in the statute that, that approval not required is as a matter of rights, so it's not a subdivision. So again, I, I, I thought Town Council was going to be part of this tonight, we could have had the discussion. I, I know he's not here, and maybe we'll have to have a discussion at another, another time, but I'm going to suggest that the clock has started and that the offer is a bona fide offer.
Okay, well, I, I think that without our Town Council, obviously.
And I, I, I agree.
This board's gonna have a legal discussion about that.
No, uh, but I guess I, I thought he was gonna be, I thought he was gonna be.
I understand.
So I, 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 I guess I should have called him in advance, but I thought he was gonna be present.
So let me just ask Madam Town Manager, if this was a bona fide one, what would the clock be?
It would have started on September twenty-fifth.
So that puts us, what, October and November, December, so it puts us to January, about January twenty-fifth. So you are looking, okay, so the, the, the issue of whether it's bona fide or not, notwithstanding, Mr. Kibbe, you're answering, you're asking the board not to vote any, in any way on this, while you have a, you and your committee have a chance to investigate that, but this will require a town meeting vote, because this will be a purchase of land.
Not necessarily, uh, because the other option that the town has is to assign its rights to a qualified organization, which could then exercise those rights under, uh, under the terms of chapter sixty-one.
So if there. Does that just require a simple Board of, Board of Selectmen vote?
Assignment by the Board of Selectmen, correct.
All right. Now I understand more clearly.
So, yeah, yeah, and that, that, that type of, uh, transaction, uh, would, would be one that would, would be required to result in at least seventy percent of the property being conserved. That's by statute, so there's a, there's a requirement in there that allows, um, uh, for some flexibility in how you approach a, an ultimate outcome with a third party, um, organization such as a land trust. And so, you know, the concepts we could consider here would include some limited development of the property in areas that aren't containing the significant resources that we're most concerned about. It could include, um, involvement of a sale of what's called an agricultural preservation restriction to the state, which would help provide some of the funding, uh, into the conservation strategy. And it could involve a private owner, an agricultural owner, continuing to own and manage the property as agricultural land on a go-forward basis. So there are different ways that we could bring funding sources into a prospective, uh, uh, conservation outcome uh, that would conserve the most important resources, uh, and allow the property to stay on the tax rolls, uh, and not cost the town anything in terms of our investment into the project. Uh, so for all of those stars to align requires a little bit of time to put that together. And I wouldn't want to, uh, go down the road of, uh, recommending that the town, uh, uh, assign their right of first refusal under the statute without knowing if that's even feasible, if the pieces could actually come together, we're just too early in the process to know that, uh, which is why we're asking for a little bit more time. It's quite possible that we come back, it's quite possible that we come back and say, it's just not, the pieces aren't there, and to be able to put the, pull this together in the amount of time that we have to pull it, the pieces just aren't there, there's no deal to be had, and go ahead and waive, but we're just not at that point right now.
How much time are you looking for? How much time would it take to determine what you just outlined?
Um, well, you know, it's the, you know, holidays are coming and everything else, so, uh, it, it, you know, it's hard to, hard to know is, 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 you know, but I think, you know, we have a meeting coming up on November twenty-fourth, as I said, and my hope is that we have some sense of, of how things are coming together in time for that meeting, so that we can make a recommendation to the board then. Uh, uh, we have another meeting already on the books for, uh, early December as well, so if, for some reason, we're close but not quite there at November twenty-fourth, we have another meeting coming up in early December. So, given that we've got a hundred and twenty days to make the assignment and, uh, or, or to make a decision on the right of first refusal, which is the town's right, bought and paid for through the reduced taxes, I think it makes good sense for us to, you know, take a good hard look at this and see what we can put together. And if we can put something together and an assignment makes sense, the, the assignee would then have to close within ninety days per the statute. So, uh, there, there's a defined timeline there, and there's a lot of things that would have to come together for a six hundred thousand dollar deal. So there's, uh, what, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that there is a, uh, there is a high likelihood that we can put something together. What I am saying is that we should at least take a little bit of time to see if there is something that can put together. So, I, I, that's all we're asking for from the board.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, in, in light of, uh, Mr. Kibbe's statement tonight, and the, uh, Planning Board's letter, which indicates that they also are asking for some more time to evaluate this, um, can we plan to postpone discussion until the first week of December? Do you want that in a motion or just discussion?
I don't need, we don't need a motion, if we don't act on it, it automatically goes on, so we don't have to do anything.
Well, I, I would then propose that we continue this discussion until the first meeting in January, um, with the expectation that by then we'll have more information from, uh, Open Space Committee and from the, uh, Planning Board.
No, I'm not gonna adjourn it to any specific time, I'm gonna wait for the Open Space Committee, I would propose that we wait till the Open Space Committee gets back to us, but not to exceed the January first timeframe. So, if you guys want to try to do something until then, I, I think it's within our purview to do it, it would be, make sense for us to entertain that from your committee, that's why we have your committee, I don't see any reason to rush this with a vote in any other way, so, unless somebody on the board objects, I'm perfectly fine with, you know, waiting for the next meeting of the Open Space Committee and see what they can determine. Anybody on the board have any objection to that?
I'm here.
Okay. So I think that's what we will do, uh, Mr. Avini, I, I, I will assume our Town Council would be in touch with you about the.
Well, I'll, I'll be in touch with him, so are we, are we gonna be on the December agenda just to keep track of this, or how is that gonna work, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, we will, I, I will, through the Town Manager, we will let you know what agenda it's on. It will be, it won't be, since their next meeting is not till, the Open Space Committee's not, meeting is not till November twenty-fifth.
I have that.
Okay, so it will be in December, yes.
Okay, that, that's fair enough.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak to anything on this before I go to another? I appreciate all your input and all your time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, somehow, through the miracle of science, we have gotten up, back on track, eight o'clock, uh, meeting with Sean O'Neil of Bright Farms regarding the TIF agreement at three sixty-one Mass Ave. So I will turn it over to you, Madam Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So after our last meeting, those, uh, the revisions that the board discussed at that meeting were made, um, and it's in the form of draft number four that you have in your Google Drive, uh, specifically the, um, the paragraph regarding the jobs and holding job fairs. Um, there is another change as well to, it's under section A, uh, two, it's the, the base valuation.
Which, which document, which document are we looking at?
It's draft number four.
I don't see a draft number four, I see a draft number three.
I'm sorry, it should, uh.
Revised TIF agreement from Bright Farms?
No, the other one.
TIF agreement for eight-year option? Those are the three I'm seeing.
It should be, it, if it says draft number three, it shouldn't say draft number four, but, um, that's the correct one.
So when I was reading through this, the one that says revised TIF agreement, even though it's dated October the twenty-eighth, it contains new information that's on the one dated November the third, so it seems to be a, a newer draft than draft number three.
So I think before we move on, let's all make sure we're what, looking at the document that we need to be looking at.
Yeah, it should have been titled draft number four at the very top instead of three.
So it is dra, it is the one that on the Google Drive says draft number three, it just is mistitled?
Mistitled.
Okay, all right, so I'm looking at, all right, so everybody should be in draft number three.
Yeah.
The document that says draft number three, even though it's draft number four.
And going to, um, page two, A two, the base valuation is, because, um, I was notified after last time that, that Bright Farms is not purchasing the entire one hundred and eighteen acre parcel, that changes the base valuation. Um, they're purchasing forty-five acres of that one hundred and eighteen acre parcel, so that base valuation is five hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred, according to the assessors.
Okay.
Um, so those were the main components that, that we discussed the last meeting. Um, since last meeting as well, and, uh, Mr. O'Neil is here to speak to this, but I received from him, his legal counsel did further, uh, a further review in the last draft that was sent, and there's a secondary, um, document titled Revised TIF Agreement from Bright Farms. This is with all of their comments, and Mr. O'Neil can walk the board through their, their comments.
Mr. O'Neil, are you with us? Mr. O'Neil?
Oh, sorry, I, I've had a little bit of a spotty connection, so if there was a question, I missed it.
Uh, the Town Manager wants you to walk through the changes that you provided in the revised agreement.
Okay, so, there are a lot of, um, kind of more administrative type markup that, that I don't think bears reviewing, you know, that we're a Delaware-based corporation, most, most LLCs are, a lot of LLCs are, will be obviously qualified to do business in Massachusetts. Um, rather than walk through everything, I think there's really two big ones, and if folks want to call out others you want to go through, I'm happy to do so, but I think the two most important ones are, one is, um, we're coming in with a commitment to create sixty jobs, and in fact, we'll create more than that at the beginning, but Bright Farms and everybody in our business is, um, in the process of, uh, trying to innovate, um, and, and, uh, and get rid of some of the jobs that frankly, nobody likes to do. Um, most of those involve the pack room, packing lettuce, they're not high-skill jobs, and they're not a, they're not our highest wage jobs. So, um, what we're trying to do. So um what we're trying to do is uh over time is to reduce the pack room jobs and I don't wanna get penalized for it. Um can anybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, um so it seems to me that what, what would be good for, if, if, if I was in a public policymaking position, and I'm not, but it seems to me that um it would be uh in line with a commitment to uh for job creation to want uh uh at least to be able to trade quality for quantity. So what I've endeavored to do is to suggest that we will raise wages in line with any job reductions. Um so that uh, so that Bright Farms is, is, if we have fewer jobs, they're higher paying, higher skilled jobs. Um and that's, that's basically what's happening in our industry is that uh everybody who does what we do, I, one of our competitors down the road has way fewer employers, employees than we do. We won't ever have a system that's as automated as theirs. Um that's not how we, we operate. We have more employees. But um we will endeavor to automate our pack room and have uh I'll just tell you what this means in practice is getting uh reducing the people who pack boxes and adding higher skilled people who actually repair the machines that pack the boxes. And that's sort of inevitable for us. It has to do with just the way the industry's going. And we don't wanna be penalizing the agreement, but we've, what we've offered in return is to have higher wages. Um and I would add that it, if we can do this, it, it enhances our ability to do a phase two, at which point our jobs will be wildly over sixty. They'll be more like eighty or a hundred or, or thereabouts. So that's the first one, and I'll leave it there to see if folks wanna discuss that provision.
I don't see where that was changed. So what do you, I don't, what are you proposing that you're changing? Cause that whereas isn't, I don't see that modified, so unless I'm looking at something wrong.
Page three, part B. Section one.
Page three, part B, section one. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Jeffries.
So I have a couple of questions for Mr. O'Neal. Uh so thank you again for your, for your time tonight. So with, with the, with the change, I mean, there's the language that you're proposing for the folks at home who can't read this. It says that within six months completion of the project and commence in the full operations therein, uh that the company shall create sixty new permanent uh subject to the following sentence, new permanent jobs subject to the following sentence, that the town acknowledges that the operation of the project may be subject to innovation from time to time, which may impact the number of such jobs created. And the town agrees that the company shall be in compliance with its obligations under this agreement in the event that the quantity of jobs is reduced below sixty. Provided that for each job reduction below sixty, the average wages and benefits the remaining job of the company increase by at least point five percent for each job reduction below sixty. So, you know, in, in one year, as an example, you know, um typical cost of living adjustments are in the range of two to three and a half percent. We can say about three. So I mean, that language then means that, you know, doing a standard cost of living increase would permit a cut in um what, six employees? And that that wouldn't be, that would not then pose any kind of conflict. Um and then, you know, I, I know that you said that the glare, that, that there's big things here, but I'm also assuming that the next part of this discussion is, is right above that, where what you're looking for, for a tax incentive now has increased from roughly one million to now roughly two million dollars. So I guess my question is, is can you, can you better explain to me what the town is getting in exchange for the, you know, now two million reduction? And, and, and can you better explain in relation to jobs? Cause again, it seems as if you can cut six jobs by doing a standard cost of living increase.
Hold on, he is muted. There you go.
Sorry, I'll try to stay unmuted. I uh, I'm in the habit on Zoom just for background noise of muting. Um and it's in your control, so I'll, I'll try to manage that better. Um so there's a couple of things there. It's a, a, a cost of living adjustment happens, you know, on a, on a sort of a, an annual basis. Um what I'm suggesting in that language is if we reduce, if we automate packing, which is definitely coming for our company, and we reduce um the pack room from twelve to three people, for example, at one time, you could take that uh if it's twelve to three, you'd take nine, multiply by point five percent, and all the wages need to come up by an, the average wages need to come up by that amount. So we're not talking about an annualized cost of living adjustment. What I'm suggesting is we'll trade higher wage, higher skilled jobs for the jobs that it's hardest for us to staff. Um in, in North Carolina, we are having to use H two A visas. Um because, not because the wages are low, their wages aren't terribly low for the area. It's that no one likes to do the pack room jobs, so we're automating it. Um and so that's, that's just sort of the hard facts of staffing that position. Um but if we were, what I'm saying, suggesting is that we not be penalized in the agreement for trading higher skill, higher wage jobs for lower, for lower wage jobs. And again, it's not, I live in Massachusetts. Um I, 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 I would anticipate that we have some of the same challenges with local staffing of the least desirable job. So we'll have it, but we would like, what we're asking is that the town accept trading higher wage, uh trading quality for quantity. Um and, and like I said, that will enable us to do phase two. As to the increase in the tax amount, I, I, I'm not following that.
Follow up on you in that first part?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
So I, I understand, I hear what you're saying, and I think that the words are great. I think I'm, what I'm trying, and I'm not trying to put you in a hot seat tonight, certainly the intent, I think on our part is to try to forge a positive relationship for the benefit of Bright Farms and for our town. I think what I'm trying to understand is if you were to, in an event, lay off six workers because you were able to make some automated improvements. Um and in exchange for that, if you were to then, let's say, do a three percent um cost of living increase, based on this agreement, so that I'm clear. If you were to lay off six employees and if you were to across the board do a three percent uh wage increase, i- is, am I, am I understanding correctly that that would be allowable, permissible? And that that's what this agreement would, would certainly have permit? Is that a fair understanding?
Well, close. I mean, I don't know about the math, right? So um the what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is the, the, the pack room jobs are um the ones that are almost certainly the ones that would get uh downsized. Um and what I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is that the average wage across the company would have to go up by point five percent for every job. So um you, we would be increasing our, the, the, the pay scale for the whole company, not just because lower wage jobs left, but because we're adding higher wage jobs. Um so it doesn't work out neatly to three percent, you know, increase or whatever. It, what, what I'm suggesting is that um as the um, as each job is downsized in the pack room, the average for the whole company, meaning um in, in a sense, the disposable income of all the local employees is going up. I think that's the way I would look at it. Uh I don't know if that makes
I think you're saying, I think you're saying what I'm asking, which is that if, if you were to lay off six employees and if you were to do a three percent increase across the board for everyone, that that would not be out of compliance with this proposal.
Right, conception, conceptually, without getting into the math of whether three percent is the right number, cause it's gonna be per job, right?
Five per position, two positions would be one percent.
Yes.
Six positions would be three percent.
Exactly, but that point, that percentage, sorry to interrupt, that possession, that percentage applies to all the wages across the company. So it's, I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it, it makes sense to me. So if, if you do a three percent pay raise, it allows you to cut six people. I mean, that's, that's what the math says.
Oh, that's exactly. Now you, now we're speaking the same language, yes.
Okay.
Um and again, I, I'm not trying to, there's no, I, I'm trying to be very upfront about this so we don't deal with it later. This is what's happening in the industry. It involves, like I said, the least desirable jobs. Um and we're just trying to um make sure that we're not penalized for it. And like I said, it, it affects our ultimate um uh profitability, which will allow us to build a phase two and increase the tax benefit to the town and like that. So um if you want, I'll go ahead into the, if there's nothing more on that, I'll go into the uh suggestion that we're asking for more tax benefit, cause that's not exactly the case, but I, I can explain. Do you want me to go into that?
Please, please.
Okay, so
And it wasn't that you're asking for more tax benefit, it was more so what is the town getting in exchange for the two million dollars in tax credits?
Okay, so I think the taxable amount that we agreed upon last time is the same. Um it should, what I think Heather did was to squash it to eight years and modify the percentages accordingly, so it comes in a different yearly um uh quantity, but I think it's the same that we agreed last time. It, it should be, and if not, I'm happy to modify so it is. Um what's different is we may build a phase two, and phase two isn't contemplated in this agreement. And what I tried to open the door to is that if we build a phase two, that we can come back to you and say, hey, we don't want, in a sense, if we build a phase two, we don't have any tax benefit associated with that. And we'd like to have um the same kind of incentive to both increase your tax base and add jobs that, that a phase two would, would give us in this phase. So rather than say, what I could have said, actually, maybe I even tried this, was to say, oh, the tax incentive, the tax procedure should apply to phase two, just as they do apply to phase one. And Heather said, hey, that's not what we've agreed here. Um so all I tried to do was add language to suggest that we can come back to you to build phase two and, and renegotiate the, the TIF so that there's still some benefit for, because we'll be adding roughly the same amount of taxable value to your roles for phase two. And I think we should have the same incentive to do so. Um but we may need to renegotiate and maybe probably it, it lifts all boats in a way. It will get um broader tax benefit sooner for the town, but we still have some incentive for phase two. So that's all I was trying to
I appreciate that. I think the question that I'm trying to understand though is, is I, I think that you've laid that out. It's laid out in the documents. Assuming that you have that two million dollar uh tax incentive, what is the benefit to the town by offering up that two million dollar incentive? I'm trying to get a better understanding of what it is that you're offering to us in exchange for that.
Hold on, you're back on mute, Sean. Hold on.
Bad habit, sorry. Um so I'm sorry, Mr. Jeffries. So I, I don't know if I fully grasp, are you saying, what is the benefit we're asking for? Why are you doing the TIF in the first place?
I'm not, I'm not quite saying why are you doing the TIF in the first place. I'm saying that as you are proposing this, this two million dollar in tax incentive, you know, what is it that you're offering to us? Wha- what's our incentive to agree to that? Um I'm not so, not so much global, but I think there's a lot of provisions here and a lot of them are focused around jobs. But based on the current wording, if you do a standard cost of living increase, you can cut six positions. Um and so I'm trying to get a better understanding of what it is that you're saying, hey, here's what I'm bringing to the table in exchange for getting this two million dollar tax incentive.
So if I'm sitting in your position, there's two things that I'm interested in at least, maybe more, but you know, you know, one, we're taking a residential site off the table. We're, we're putting in a, a, a net tax creator. And we are, um so, so there's the tax benefit to the town, some of which we're asking to have back. I get that in an incentive. But we are adding taxable property to the rolls and progressively paying some tax, more, more and more taxes. So I think that's one benefit. The other is the jobs. Um and I'm not trying to take the jobs off the table. Um what I'm suggesting is that we may reduce jobs and add higher wage ones in exchange. I would, I would disagree with the idea that it's just a standard cost of living increase, because again, that's, that's an annual thing that's applied to a lot of wages. Um everybody in the company will probably get standard wage increases because that's just what we do. That's what most companies do. That happens as a natural matter, of course. The, the, if we uh downsize the pack room, let's say in year three, and automate it, right then, we have to add higher wage jobs and boost everybody's wages. Um and so I'm suggesting that our average has to come up that year. And then whatever happens with a cost of living increase annually is uh compounding on top of that. So what I'm, I'm trying to suggest that the formula here gets you higher quality jobs in exchange for fewer of the jobs that, quite frankly, we've had to use temp agencies, we've had to do H two A visas. Um and, and it's, it's, it's very hard to keep it staffed. It's a, it's a huge issue for us. Um so, so I'm offering, I'm, I'm offering up higher disposable income, higher wages for locals in exchange for the lower quality jobs that, that the locals may not wanna do. It's just one portion of the, of the greenhouse. It's a small portion, but I, I don't wanna get penalized for innovating. That's the point.
I just, this is the Tom. Uh I would say to that, I, I, I understand where you're coming from and I'm willing, as one member, I'm willing to be flexible in that. But I think if we're, if you're approaching that, I would like to see a basement that it doesn't go below so many jobs. So I'm willing to say, okay, you can innovate. But you know, let, I'll just take a number, you know, let's just say twenty percent, that you can't go below forty eight jobs. I mean, that's part of the jobs is part of the incentive, and I think we should at least cap that, that you can innovate, and I'm for innovation, but I also wanna make sure this, it doesn't get innovated out of the contract, so it's, it's, the number of jobs is meaningless.
Right, that's reasonable. So we'll come back with uh, we'll come back with a number.
Okay. As for, as for the section about phase two, I understand what you're trying to accomplish. I would say that the wording that was proposed, at least to me, doesn't accomplish that. It actually gets really tangled. So I'm more than happy to say in that, in, in A, number four, actually this looks like there's two number fours. Uh but anyway, uh the first number four, I would say that we put something in there, proviso, that if you come back to us with phase two, that, that we can, both parties agree that we'll reopen the negotiations of what this TIF howl would reply to phase two. I think we're jumping ahead and putting phase two numbers in here without knowing much about it and without phase one even being done.
No, you just said clearly better than I wrote it, and I'd like to blame the lawyers, but I might have wrote, written that part. Um what you just said is what I want. Uh I, I, I'm not suggesting that we can apply a good formula to it. We'll just come, I wanna, I wanna make sure that both, that we're incentivized to do it, that there's no barriers in place because we might upsize the greenhouse someplace else. And I wanna make sure that we're, you know, we upsize this one because um you know, the stars are aligned and things are working well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, that language is in C one, they've actually added in a section that would prevent us from being able to renegotiate. Um you know, at the very end of C one, it, it notes that they can come in the future, but that uh we may not reasonably upheld consent, condition, or deny by this town. It would seem that if we're having a discussion in the future, that that word conditioned would then need to be removed to be consistent with your intent that we can have this discussion in the future.
That's lawyer language. I definitely didn't write that one.
That's, yeah, but that's talking about that the company can't convey this TIF to somebody else without our approval. It has nothing to do about amending it or anything. That's just had to do transferring the rights and the, and the signs of the, of the document itself. They, they can't sell this to somebody else without us approving it.
Yeah, and, and that's why I read it as well, but I, I, I assume in a lot of these transactions um that you may have hands, companies changing hands.
Well, that's what that's for, and I think that's why I, I would agree with Mr. O'Neal that for my sake as well, I don't wanna, I'm not a lawyer. I, I'm, I'm decently proficient at reading law documents, but I'm not a lawyer. That's why we have town council and I like him to, we let him know what the intent is and let him write it. He did, he did it with the, the now famous tripartite agreement. I'm sure he can do it with this, so. I think, I just wanna understand in layman's terms, all of us here, what we're being asked to do and all parties understand in general English terms, what we're trying to do, and let them write it such that it conveys that idea.
Yep.
Were those the two big changes in all of this document?
In, in my opinion, those are the only really two material ones. I, I don't know if other people see things, but that, in my mind, those are the only ones that, that really affect the substance of the agreement. Heather, were there others that you wanted to point out?
Oh, hold on, Heather, you're muted. My board keeps me on my toes.
Those were the two major ones that the board needs to be well aware of. And also that any of this language, language would still need to be approved by the state. So the initial draft was for to the, to the state as well, and this one will be as well now once town council and Wright Farms Council agrees on that language. But that's one caveat, so anything in here would, the state would need to agree to as well.
Just a little concerned about the, the distance of time between now and town meeting, special town meeting, so.
Does it have to be all wordsmith at that point, or can they agree the substance at town meeting?
I believe the article is that it authorizes the board to negotiate that. But what was, has been presented in various meetings was that we would bring the proposal that the town agreed to, to town meeting.
Okay, okay.
I think everything substantive has to, we have to be able to convey that. We may be able to correct the sentence here and there, but we won't be able to substantively change that without angering a lot of town meeting voters.
So I think the main substantive thing I owe you, unless the lawyers identify some other concern, is the cap, the, the floor jobs number. And again, we want to build a phase two and increase total jobs. That's my, that's my goal. But, but you want a floor, I thought that was reasonable, and we'll, we'll bring that back.
Okay.
And I would add as well, you know, that, with that, because I think that we, we propose 60, so essentially you're counter proposing us on a number, and that that language that talks about, you know, being able to reduce that, I would, I want to see that language eliminated.
To, to go below 60?
No, 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 that whatever number, whatever your counter number is, that it doesn't, that you don't also include the same clause, that if you, that you can eliminate a position so long as everyone else gets a half or percentage pay increase. Because the, because of my concern about the net impact there, with certainly all this is in good faith, but the net impact, as I referenced earlier, is that if you were to do a standard cost of living increase with just the language you currently have, it permits a cut in six people. So I guess as you go back and renegotiate this, to have a counter number for our 60 offer.
Well, it's not a counter number, I mean, just be clear, what I said to him is we want to put it at 60, and I don't mind the language he put in there only up to a point. That means we have to put a basement that you can't go lower than this number of jobs, and I offered 20%, which would be 12 jobs, so you can't go below 48 jobs.
Yeah, that's how I understand it. So the language would remain, but that language would not apply to anything below the cap, so, you know.
If he went below the cap, if he went below the basement, then he would be in violation of the agreement.
You put the TIF in jeopardy, yeah.
So it gives him some flexibility in running the business, but it does, it gives us some protection of that jobs is part of the component that we're agreeing to this to begin with, so. Any other questions about the TIF or for Mr. O'Neal or anybody else?
Yeah, I have just one last question. When you talk about high paying jobs, what are, what are those wages that you're talking about? How much are they making per hour?
Oh, so a couple of things, I mean, our, our average wage, and this is because of the PAC room, is probably in the neighborhood of between 45 and 50. But that's because, but that doesn't collect 401K and benefits and other things, other elements that we have. We, everybody in our company gets 401K and, and healthcare and benefits. And I think the best way to compare that is to comparable agriculture. Agriculture jobs almost never pay that. My wife runs a nonprofit farm, I can tell you that these wages are twice as high as, as her farm can pay. So relative to the sector, we're, we're very good. The, you know, the upper end of the range, I mean, the, the higher skilled jobs pay more and the PAC room pays less, and that's what we're trying, we're trying, again, to do more higher tech, higher wage jobs. I can send you the full scale if you want.
Yeah, that, that'd be helpful. I don't know if I'd consider $45,000 a year to be a high paying job.
No, I wouldn't either. But again, that average is dragged down by, by the PAC room. It's, it's, it's consistent with what I'm suggesting that we'll trade quantity for quality.
All right, I, I would, yeah, if you can provide that wage data so we can have an idea of what average and common wages are, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. O'Neal, I thank you for your time again. I thank the board for all their, their good questions about this, and we'll wait to see the revisions. And let's get on to the next phase of this and prepare for a special town meeting.
Thank you all, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Some resignations and appointments. So we have first resignation from the Finance Committee with John Henshaw. I want to take the opportunity now, John is, is a longtime friend in town. He has served seven years on the Finance Committee. And during his tenure there, has brought a wealth of information, a wealth of analysis, and really great leadership to that committee. I know he's well respected by everyone there. He has really set off in really delving into policies and delving into analyzing things from every angle, as you would expect a Finance Committee member to do. And I'm sorry to see him resign, but you know, I understand where he's coming from, and it has been seven years, that's a, you know, two plus terms. I want to wish him the best and thank him for all his years of really great work that he put in, in, in helping be part of, and in many respects, leading with Terry Birchfield, the Finance Committee. So he'll be missed, and I hope we will still continue to see him at the Special Town Meeting and other town meetings. Ms. Adams.
I also wanted to thank him for his service. When I first got involved in town government as a citizen to try to learn the process, I attended a lot of Finance Committee meetings. And he is so, he's so detail oriented, really followed through on topics and would go through a lot to explain and follow through with everything. And so I think he's definitely going to be missed. And I think seven years is a long time, so that's awesome that he served.
And Madam Town Manager, if we can have a letter, I'll get to you in a second, Mr. Marino. If we can have a letter drafted so that we could sign in commemoration of his years. Mr. Marino.
Yeah, it's really sad to see that John is resigning from the Finance Committee. I had the pleasure of working closely with him for a number of years, as his, he was the liaison to the Police Department of Public Safety. And I gotta tell you, more of a, I couldn't think of a more gentle, kind person, thoughtful, intelligent, as Katie said, detail oriented, oriented, and just love the guy. And it was a sad thing to see that he's going to leave, but on the other hand, I'm kind of glad. I hope he enjoys himself now, you know, takes, takes a little time for himself, because I know he works really hard. And I thank him for all of the help that he's given me as a police chief in the past. And I wish him the best of luck going forward.
Thank you. Okay, we have two ratifications for, from the Town Manager, one regarding an alternate building inspector and one for the DPW Director. I will hand it over to the Town Manager to introduce both motions here, or both ratification candidates.
Okay, I'll start with the alternate building inspector. So we have a building commissioner, but if in the event he's unavailable due to vacation or out of the office for some reason, we would need someone to fill in for those inspections if need be. And the Town of Townsend, their building inspector is, we've worked out that he could be our alternate. And so this would only occur if we needed an inspection. So I'm asking the board ratify my appointment of an alternate building inspector of Eric Shertrand.
Do I have such motion?
I'll make a motion that we ratify the appointment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in, roll call vote, Ms. Adams. Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye from me. And number two.
And the second ratification that I'm asking for the board is for the DPW Director position. And Mr. Oliva is here tonight, but first I would like to read to the board a letter I drafted. "I'm extremely pleased to make the recommendation to the Select Board requesting the board ratify my appointment of Robert Oliva as the Director of Department of Public Works. As the Board is aware, after receiving the current DPW Director's written notice on September 21st, that his last day before retirement would be October 30th, the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director advertised the position that same week on the town website. The American Public Works Association, the newspaper, noninde.com, with a preference given to applicants that submitted applications by October 14th. We received a total of seven applications, and after prescreening the applications to determine if they were qualified, we scheduled interviews the week of October 19th with four of the candidates. We ultimately interviewed two of the four candidates as they withdrew their applications. Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, and I were very impressed with how Rob presented himself during the interview and the level of experience he would bring to Lunenburg. Rob comes highly qualified with 25 years of experience as a civil engineer and has worked the last three years in municipal government. Rob attended the University of Massachusetts at Lowell, where he received a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. He then went on to work for two different engineering firms, Hamway Engineering and David E. Ross Associates, where he was responsible for all planning and design aspects for site development projects of various sizes, including local, state, and federal permitting processes. Was a senior project manager for eight years, that also included consulting for the Lunenburg Planning Board on various projects. Rob is currently the Assistant Director of Department of Public Works for the City of Gardner, where he has worked the last three years. In that position, he is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the water and sewer divisions and assists with the management of the highway, parks, and cemetery divisions under the DPW. Overall, has decades of civil engineering experience dealing with roads, infrastructure, stormwater, water, sewer, and site plan review, as well as municipal experience on assisting with managing cemeteries, parks, budgeting, capital planning, and experience working with the union make him an ideal candidate. Speaking with his references and others that have worked with Rob, we heard repeated comments about how easy it is to work with, that he is a good communicator, and then that he would be an asset to the town. Given Rob's extensive background in civil engineering, municipal experience, and personality, that would be a good fit to leave the Department of Public Works, respectfully request that you ratify my appointment of Robert Oliva as the next Department of, Director of Department of Public Works."
So before we do this, make, take discussion on this vote, I will offer you, Mr. Oliva, to introduce yourself to the board and people at home, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me?
You can.
Okay, well, first off, I'd like to thank Heather and Julie for the great interview. They were both great. I'm very excited for this opportunity. I've worked in Lunenburg for many years on different projects. So I know the town a little bit, I know some of the people in Town Hall. So I think it's a perfect fit for me, and I'm, I'm excited to hit the ground running. I live somewhat locally, I do live in Gardner, so I have a little commute, but it won't be bad. As Heather said, I've been in civil engineering for over 20 years. I've worked in the City of Gardner for the last three, I guess getting my feet wet in the municipal setting. But, but overall, I'm very happy, I'm very excited for, for the new challenges that I face. And I start Monday, hopefully, so I, I hope to meet you all, and, and I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll see a lot of each other.
Thank you. Anybody have any, any questions or any comments before we move to a vote? Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering if, Mr. Oliva, you seem to have a deep civil engineering experience. Are you a registered professional?
No, I'm not.
Ms. Adams.
I just wanted to say welcome, but also thank you to Heather and everyone involved. It's nice when there's not a lapse in a position, and especially if we're heading into winter and everything. And so that was my first thought when it was snowing on Friday when Jack was retiring. So I thank you for this seamless transition here.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, first welcome, I'm excited to have you come on board. I also understand that, you know, Gardner has a different system than us in terms of, you know, part of DPW with Lunenburg is, is facilities. And I understand that Gardner has a facilities position. So hopefully, we can, over the next year or so, working with the Town Manager, you know, you can bring some of that experience of, of kind of the division of duties in Gardner and kind of help us get, get better at how we manage buildings in town. So I certainly look forward to you coming on board and.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. I know we'll all have some things to learn together, but I'm not afraid of that, and I look forward to it.
Excellent.
Mr. Marino.
I too would like to thank the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager and staff involved in the interview process. I know that involves a lot of hard work, and you've done a good job, and I'd like to say to Rob, welcome aboard and look forward to working with you. I'd like to sit down and have a chat with you sometime when you have a few minutes. Just share some of my experience and knowledge of the town, the, you know, the aspect of policing with respect to roads and so forth, and to the current police chief. So good luck and glad to have you.
Thank you very much, and I would welcome any visits, my door will always be open. Basically, you're all from Lunenburg, I'm not, so there's some institutional knowledge there that whatever you can give me will be helpful and appreciated.
Looking to set up an appointment, Mr. Marino, I think he's probably busy on Monday morning, maybe Monday afternoon.
Well, I'll keep an eye on the weather.
I would also like to welcome you too. I believe that, you know, every once in a while, things happen fortuitously, and that is a good thing. I mean, it was a short window to replacing, you know, a longtime director. And if we could do it seamlessly and not, not too long with an acting, I thought we would have an acting director at some point. The fact that somebody of your background, you know, came into the process and the application process is really just, is everyone, hopefully, I believe, you believe, everybody's good fortune, ours as well as yours. And sometimes things happen like that, so that's always good. I never like to, you know, turn my back on that or the possibility of that, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate the Town Manager and, and the HR Director and Assistant Town Manager in doing these interviews, and as was evident in her review, I, I, as one member of this board, truly trust her judgment in, in evaluating people. She's made good hires already. I don't see why this would be any different, and I look forward to you really becoming accustomed to your role up to speed quickly, so, given your background. And yes, there'll be things that are different here in Lunenburg than they're, than they were in Gardner, but probably in the world of, if Department of Public Works is probably more the same than different. So that would be helpful, and anything we can do to help you ease in? Just like you said, your, your door is open, our virtual door, we don't have offices in. just like you said, your, your door is open, our virtual door. We don't have offices in Town Hall, but our virtual doors are open and certainly our phone lines are open in case you need to contact us for anything.
Well, I, I appreciate that and, and would thank you for placing your faith in me and, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. All right, uh, I will take a roll call vote regarding the, oh, did we, I need a vote.
Just a motion, right?
Yeah, yes.
I would make a motion that we ratify the town manager's appointment of DPW Director, is it Oliva?
Oliver.
Okay.
We'll, we'll work on the pronunciation when you get here.
That's quite all right.
It's gonna be hard as a, as an Italian to not say Oliva, but I will try to say Oliver, I promise.
It, it's the most misspelled, mispronounced, five-letter name there is.
I challenge you with my maiden name.
All right, so do we have a second? All right, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Congratulations. Good luck and I, I wish you a, a, a good, good transition in coming to Lunenburg.
We can only pray and I hope so too. Thank you again and everybody have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We'll see you Monday.
Okay, uh, let's see. I will say to the rest of the board that I did get a request from a member to want to put the ratification process and, and review what it means to ratify, appointments by the town manager and just to review how that process should work. Uh, I think we will put that on a, we're gonna put it on the list of future meetings to have that. So I just wanted to acknowledge that I did receive that and, uh, we can discuss it further at, at that meeting when it is an agenda item. Okay, old business, discussion of special town meeting articles. Do we have anything to discuss on special town meeting articles? Is there any new information for us, Madam Town Manager?
Uh, let's see. The finalized warrant after you reordered is in your, your draft. Everyone should have received a copy. And, um, Mr. Blatt, the Green Communities Task Force, he presented on Thursday to the Finance Committee, as far as, uh, and it was a very similar presentation to his previous presentation from the annual town meeting, or prior to, leading up to the annual town meeting. As far as costs, so those costs, um, were ninety-one thousand for the purchase of the streetlights from Unitel. Or if Unitel converted those lights, it would be approximately sixty-six thousand. The union agreements, we had, um, the board had voted those. Prior, those numbers were presented to the, the Finance Committee as well. Thursday, I presented those with what that financial impact would be for those two articles or one-year agreements.
We did, we did receive, on that note, we did receive something from Elaine that, that, that the municipal workers is, uh,
Is ready to, to sign it in a way. Yes.
So everybody, we need everybody's signature, right? This is not just me at this point.
It's everybody's signature on, yes.
So please make sure that you contact Elaine and determine a time where you can go up this week and get that signed.
Just to, um, reiterate those, those numbers for the fire collective bargaining agreement, the one-year agreement, the impact, total impact is sixteen thousand four sixty-three and fifty-seven cents. And the clerical one-year agreement, the total impact is thirteen thousand three eighty-nine and forty-three cents. The, um, when we discussed last, the regular stabilization fund, that would, right now, would stand around two-hundred-and-twelve thousand. That's the recommendation. But it would, that number would change if the streetlights article didn't pass. So it would increase by that amount if the streetlights article did not pass. Those are the only updates I have at this time.
Anybody else have any questions about the special town meeting? For those listening, special town meeting, two weeks from tonight. By now, we should be wrapping it up two weeks from tonight, if we do it right.
And next week, if we can go over the possibility of con- uh, consent calendar, I've identified only about five articles, I think, that we'd be able to include in the consent calendar.
And for, uh, special town meeting, Mr. Murphy, it was on Facebook, was making a little joke, but we do have to be done by ten.
Hey, we should be, we, we'd be near wrapping it up now at nine o'clock, so let's hope. Okay, current business. We have Mr. Viviano, who has a disclosure by a non-elected municipal employee of a financial interest and a determination required by Mass General Law two sixty-eight A, sections nine, section nineteen. So I'm going to unmute Mr. Viviano. And
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just filed, um, the documents required for the financial disclosure. Um, I live on Lake Shirley as well as my parents, and I think you've seen some of these come across your desk, but, um, I'm just looking for determination.
Yeah, so everybody should have the disclosure in their Google Drive. This is, I think this has come up with other, even other conservation members before. It's really
Yeah.
A straightforward
Some have filed three, yeah.
Excuse me?
Some have filed three, um, financial interests, living on Hickory Hills. Another one was use of conservation land and another one was Snowville Club, I believe, so.
Yeah, there have been Anyway, the fact is that Mr. Viviano lives on a lake and that he has a financial interest with his home on the lake. And yet, with that, has determined that, obviously, even with that, he can be impartial in his decisions on the Conservation Commission. As is stated in his financial interest in the matter. Everybody should have read that. Does anybody have any questions as to that?
Uh, so we just would make a motion to accept the disclosure or what, what would be the correct?
Yes, and that he would not, we would accept his disclosure and agree that he will be impartial and that by his own determination, he can vote on these matters on issues before Lake Shirley.
Okay, I think that makes sense. The Conservation Commission has historically been, um, filled with, um, lake dwellers, so I imagine it's the same.
That's, uh, that's the oddest phrasing, lake dwellers.
I didn't know.
I like that.
Uh, so, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Viviano on this? Or any questions about the process, about what we're being asked to do? Then I would entertain a motion regarding his submission of the financial interest and determination and our acceptance, uh, of him not requiring him to recuse himself on such matters regarding Lake Shirley.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, any further discussion? Otherwise, roll call vote, Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
And an aye from me. Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Make, make us proud, Mr. Viviano.
All right, take care.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Next up, approval of minutes of September twenty-second and October sixth.
I approve we accept these minutes? I make a motion, we, I make a motion to approve these minutes.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All's in favor, Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
And an aye for me. The warrants, I signed warrants last week. Uh, accounts payable warrant in the amount of two-hundred-fifty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars and one cent. Payroll deduction warrant in the amount of two-hundred-sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars and forty cents. And a payroll warrant in the amount of eight-hundred-forty-three thousand, two-hundred-thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Action items, any action items? None. Committee reports.
Yes.
Mr. Jeffries.
Good evening. So committee report tonight for the TCP Design Committee. So I'll keep this brief, um, since they are, uh, we have an article for them to present a report to the town meeting and I certainly don't want to still that thunder. So, uh, uh, the last couple of meetings we've had, uh, at the end of last month and, and this month, sooner than yesterday. Was it yesterday?
It was yesterday, yes.
Uh, I'm just joking. All right, so the meetings that we've had, we've had quite a bit in preparation for coming to Town Hall, uh, town meeting, uh, special town meeting this month. So we've, uh, substantially completed the schematic design portion of the design of the plan. Now, what this means is, is, uh, although I mentioned before that over the last couple of months, we've reached out to community organizations, um, and, and really every stakeholder that we could identify to get a better understanding of how the space could be best utilized. And, uh, and, and in part of that process, the architects worked directly with, uh, different stakeholders to evaluate the current space needs, uh, future needs, uh, and, and certainly storage needs. And there are substantial storage needs for both the town and the schools. And so what, what has been created then is a schematic design that then went back through all of the key stakeholders with the schools, with the town offices, uh, PAC. I, you know, um, we did engage the Boys and Girls Club, although certainly, unfortunately, um, you know, we were not able to accommodate their needs in this plan, uh, but we were able to get a better understanding, especially from the school department, on the extent of all their needs. Um, I think that there were some tough questions asked and some, and some really difficult understandings to try to, try to get a better picture of why the schools were looking for, uh, so much space. And so we were able to get to a result that we, we had unanimous consensus on coming out of this, but certainly there have been, um, again circulated through the departments. And part of the success of this collaborative process is that, you know, each department has signed off on these plans identifying that, uh, what we've, uh, worked with them on, the architect has worked with them on, uh, certainly will meet their needs. So there, the intent is, uh, the recent things were that there was a traffic study that was recently completed to help improve the traffic patterns that would come in and out of the building area, as well as looking at how to improve the parking, uh, in the general area. Uh, and so all this stuff will be presented at town meeting and, uh, certainly look forward to that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other committee reports? Ms. Adams.
Um, sure, going back more to an action item, I meant to bring this up. I was wondering, um, if we can put our goal of, um, old primary slash town green on an upcoming agenda, just so that we can sort of update, um, everyone on our Saturday meeting. Um, and, you know, sort of, you know, share that walkthrough. I'm not sure if people feel like they would want to add it to the agenda, but it would be nice to be able to kind of chit chat about it at a meeting.
If you'd like to do it now, well, we can put it on next week, see the one.
Um, I don't, we can make an agenda item and just kind of, you know, we, I think we sort of set some ideas of, you know, continuing the goal, but since that, um, meeting wasn't televised and, um, I think the minutes, you know, it was, there wasn't a lot of content, but I still think it's very, you know, valuable information and exciting to share.
Okay, we can put it on, Madam Town Manager, can you make sure that goes on next week's, uh, agenda?
Thank you.
Did you get the photos, I said?
Uh, we did get the photos, thank you. They look great. That'll be helpful.
Do they really look great?
They look great, yes. I, I, it looks like Mr. Marino is still in the drone that took those photos.
I am.
Giving his back, background there, so.
See my, my sweatshirt's blowing in the wind. I, I have a great video too, but I couldn't, I couldn't make it small enough to send it. I'll show it.
Uh, any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? No. Okay, so Madam Town Manager, your report and COVID-nineteen update.
We'll start with my report. Uh, announcement of existing vacancies. There's a vacancy on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, one vacancy on the Cultural Council, one vacancy on the Finance Committee, one vacancy on the Historical Commission, one vacancy on the Parks Commission, one vacancy on the TCP Building Design Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. People that are interested in applying for these positions can find the application forms on the town website and the completed forms can be sent to the Select Board's office. Update on the Pleasant Street over Pearl Hill Brook Bridge replacement. Sealed bids for the Pleasant Street over Pearl Hill Brook Bridge replacement project will be accepted until one P M on Wednesday, November eighteenth. Subsequently, our consultant, V H B, will review all bids and recommend the qualified bidder to award the project to, and a contract will be executed by mid-December. Construction will commence in the spring with all work estimated to be complete by the end of October of two thousand twenty-one. The Senior Center Front Entrance Roof Project. Bids for the Senior Center Front Entrance Roof, Roofing Project came in on Thursday, October twenty-ninth, and we received seven bids in all. The architect has reviewed the bids and the low bidder was determined to be a responsible eligible bidder, so we will proceed with awarding the bid to the Alson Company, LLC, for fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Once all the contract documents are signed, the contractor will have twenty days to complete the project. So the plan was to get that all wrapped up, um, as quickly as possible before winter. An update on nine twenty-five Mass Ave. The consultant that performed the Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment has completed the draft written report that identifies hazardous building materials and contamination that exceeds Mast D E P standards in the soil and groundwater. The report will remain a draft until the EPA has reviewed and once they have approved, it will be finalized. Since the scope of the Phase Two is to identify the location and type of hazardous materials and not recommendations about possible funding sources to remediate the project, the property, and estimated cost for cleanup. After I spoke with the consultant about these questions, the consultant then reached out to Monachuset Regional Planning Commission about the possible, possibility of additional funding through the Brownfields Funding Source. There is a Brownfields Committee meeting tomorrow at one P M that I will be attending to see if the committee would approve an additional funding of six thousand dollars for Phase Three for the site, um, to identify, um, those funding sources as well as estimated cost for cleanup. I will update the board, um, subsequently after that meeting. Remote learning infrastructure. Last month, I reported to the board that the I T Director was going to apply for the Community Compact I T Grant for remote learning infrastructure needed at the school. The I T Director notified the Superintendent and I that he misread the deadline for the grant and when he went to submit the application, it was past the submission deadline. As it turns out, this grant would not have been awarded until around Thanksgiving and the Superintendent needs the cameras to be ordered before that timeframe. When the I T Director, Superintendent and I originally discussed the grant, discussed this grant, the backup plan, if we did not receive the grant, was to use CARESAC funding for these expenses and that, that is how we will proceed. The total cost of the cameras that has been submitted for CARESAC funding reimbursement is approximately sixty-two thousand dollars. Mast D E P Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Municipal Grant. I was notified on October thirtieth that we received a grant award of seven thousand, two hundred dollars from Mast D E P through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. This grant can be used for such things as compost bins, outreach, recycling education, and other recycling, P S U throw program, and compost-related expenses. Sale of surplus police cruisers through Minisbid. The Department of Public Works Administrative Assistant advertised the ten surplus Sale of surplus police cruisers through municipal. The Department of Public Works Administrative Assistant advertised the ser- ten surplus police cruisers on municipal, and all ten vehicles were sold for a total of ten thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. This will be a general fund receipt and will be considered surplus revenue taken in during fiscal two thousand twenty-one. For other meetings, events, and announcements, the school committee will be meeting through Zoom on Wednesday, November fourth at six thirty P M. The Conservation Commission is meeting through Zoom on Wednesday, November fourth at seven P M. The Green Communities Task Force will be meeting through Zoom on Thursday, November fifth at seven P M. The TCP Building Design Committee will be meeting through Zoom on Monday, November ninth at five thirty P M. Parks Commission is meeting through Zoom on Monday, November ninth at six thirty P M. The Planning Board is meeting through Zoom on Monday, November ninth at six thirty P M. The Sewer Commission will be meeting through Zoom on Tuesday, November tenth at five P M. And the Capital Planning Committee has a meeting on Zoom on Tuesday, November tenth at five fifteen P M. As a reminder, town offices will be closed on Wednesday, November eleventh in observance of Veterans Day. And the special town meeting will be on Tuesday, November seventeenth at seven P M. And check-in is at five thirty P M that night. On to, uh, COVID report.
Before you go, any, any questions on the town manager on her report before she goes on to the COVID report?
No, thank you. Uh, as far as COVID nineteen cases in Lunenburg, the Board of Health issued their weekly update, and the cumulative laboratory confirmed number of COVID nineteen cases reported to the town is ninety-seven as of October thirtieth and one death. The state report shows eighty-nine as of October twenty-eighth. The ninety-seven number is the total number of positive cases reported in Lunenburg Tar Board by our health agents and Nishoba Associated Boards of Health since the state began tracking, um, this data last spring. The reports are then transmitted to the Mass Department of Public Health, who backtrack each incident for accuracy. Sometimes it turns out that the COVID nineteen test was a false positive, perhaps was reported twice or a wrong address. These errors are removed from the state list. That's why there's a discrepancy between the state number and the town number. The D P H crunches the numbers for all three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns using a semi-complicated formula. The formula combines the current and previous week's reports, population and other factors, and assigns a ranking to the municipality. Based on the reporting dates of October eleventh through October twenty-fifth, and that we had six additional cases in that two-week timeframe, we move from gray to yellow. If we have twelve cases in a future reporting key period, we would move from yellow to red.
And how do you go ba- how do you go back down?
I think it's a, again, a data point as far as number of cases in a time period. Updates from the state. Um, there are now, as of October twenty-ninth, there are one hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-one COVID cases, nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven deaths, and two million seven hundred and two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three patients have been tested um, by the Mass State Public Health Laboratory Hospitals and Commercial Laboratories. Governor Baker announced new orders and advisories yesterday, November second. And each of these following orders and advisories will be effective Friday, November sixth at twelve oh one A M. First is a stay-at-home advisory. The administration issued a revised stay-at-home advisory to ensure residents avoid unnecessary activities that can lead to increased COVID nineteen transmission. The revised stay-at-home advisory instructs residents to stay at home between the hours of ten P M and, and five A M. The advisory allows act for activities such as going to work, running critical errands, to get groceries, and address health needs, and taking a walk. Order requiring early closure of businesses and activities, which is order number fifty-three. Governor Baker issued a new executive order that requires the early closure of certain businesses and activities each night at nine thirty P M. The nine thirty P M closure requir- requirement is aligned with the stay-at-home advisory and together with the two initiatives are designed to further limit activities that could lead to COVID nineteen transmission. Effective November sixth, the following businesses and activities must close to the public each day between the hours of nine thirty P M and five A M. Restaurants. In-person dining must cease at nine thirty P M. Although takeout and delivery may continue for food and non-alcoholic beverages, but not alcohol. Liquor stores and other retail establishments that sell alcohol must cease alcohol sales at nine thirty P M, but may continue to sell other products after that time. Adult-use marijuana sales must cease at nine thirty P M. This does not include medical marijuana. Indoor and outdoor events, theaters, movie theaters, including drive-in movie theaters and performance venues, indoor and outdoor. Youth and adult amateurs amateur sports activities, golf facilities, recreational boating and boating businesses, outdoor recreational experiences, casinos and horse tracks, simulcast facilities, driving and flight schools, zoos, botanical gardens, wildlife reserves, and nature centers, and close-contact personal services such as hair and nail salons, gyms, fitness centers, and health clubs, indoor and outdoor pools, and museums, cultural and historical facilities, and guided tours. The governor issued a revised order requiring face coverings in public places, which is order number fifty-five. Governor Baker signed an updated order really, um, related to face coverings that requires all persons to wear face coverings in all public places, even where they're able to maintain six feet of distance from others. The revised order still allows for an exemption for residents who cannot wear face covering due to a medical or disabling condition, but it allows employers to require employees to provide proof of such a condition. It also allows schools to require that students participating in in-person learning provide proof of such a medical or disabling condition. Another order on, uh, revised order on gatherings was issued, order number fifty-four. This order updates, uh, the restricted, the restrictions on gatherings. The new gatherings order reduces the gathering size limit for gatherings at private residences to indoor gatherings at private, private residences are limited to ten people, and outdoor gatherings at private residences are limited to twenty-five people. The limit on gatherings held in public spaces in a event venues, such as wedding venues, remains the same. The new order also requires that all gatherings, regardless of size or location, must end and disperse by nine thirty P M. The new gatherings order also requires that organizers of gatherings report known positive COVID nineteen cases to the local health department in that community and requires organizers to cooperate with contact tracing. The local health department in that community and, um, required organizers, it requires organizers to cooperate with contact tracing. The gatherings order authorizes continued enforcement by local health and police departments and specifies that fines for violating the gathering order will be five hundred dollars per person above the limit at a particular gathering. That's all the updates for, related to COVID nineteen.
Any questions on any of that from anybody? Ms. Adams.
Um, sure. I ask this question every time when all of these rules come out. Um, who do they assign as the enforcement authority? This would like, there's eleven people in my house because my family's huge or something like that.
So it would be, um, between the local Board of Health, um, and the Police Department, um, and the Department of Public Health.
And although my follow-up question may seem in some sense like a little bit facetious, but with all of these things rolled out, what happens when somebody actually calls on their neighbor and there's fifteen people in their house? Like, these aren't paths I want to see our town going down. Um, and so my mind and my sort of love for government and even boldly, may I say freedoms, um, I worry about the fact that with these orders in place, technically, there should be an enforcement authority. And, and I, I feel like all of these things are abstractly talked about, but we don't concretely define that. There's implications here. If some, if somebody did seek to, to follow through with these, how would we be consistent? What would we do? Does anybody in town, have you had any meetings with officials to, to talk about the complexities of if we're not just? I, I don't know if my question makes sense. It does to me, but we read all these things out, but if, if they're truly, um, enforcing all these things, then holy smokes.
Well, I, I think you rely on the judgment of the people who were enforcing it and how egregious things are. I mean, if people got a ticket for every person who went above the speed limit, the cops would never be, they, they would just have to stand in one spot forever. I mean, so it's a matter of judgment.
Well, it says right in the order that, uh, I mean, it, it encourages a lot of discretion in terms of enforcement. That's right in the order. And that's, it's always been. They, all the law enforcement agencies were highly encouraged to use a ton of discretion with these cases. So if a masked man shows up in your house because you have twelve people.
I mean, and, and the, like, the way my brain goes through theory and stuff, and I can't help it, it's just data-driven. It's, these orders are absurd in the sense that they're not vetted that I could very quickly lose compliance with a large family and somebody, i- i- it, to me, it's like, I would calculate square footage. If I'm in a three thousand square foot house with eleven people, while I live in a small home, my five people are more densely occupying space. It just doesn't make sense to me because it's so, it's so random. Um, but I do get concerned about the fact that there may be people that want to try to, um, enforce these upon somebody else and, and I, I don't, I don't even understand as a town how we would participate in. Um, I mean, don't they need a warrant to come see how many people are in my house? I mean, that's a real question, chief. Like, like, where's the authority here? You know?
Well, the authorities, the governor gives the law enforcement agencies and the Board of Health, with the Board of Health Authority, uh, to investigate these issues, but they still have, you still have constitutional rights. If police aren't gonna hopefully come in and violate those rights. Um, I'm sure they're gonna use a lot of discretion, especially in cases, as you just pointed out, a family has eleven people. But, you know, this whole thing's designed, the governor's order the, the other day is designed to slow down these parties because they're finding that people get together in large groups and that's seems to be what's causing some of the transmission. So this whole thing is designed to slow that all down, you know? And so if we do that, maybe for the next month, hopefully things will improve, you know? So that's all it is. I, I wouldn't be worried about it too much.
No, I, I just, the, these last set of orders came through in such a way that I feel like, um, for example, I'll use trick-or-treat as, as an example, that I feel like, at least in our community, um, you know, people being able to use their own judgment and own free will. I've been very impressed with what I've seen. Um, you know, with people having the capacity and intelligence to, you know, make good choices. Trick-or-treat in my neighborhood was so quiet and calm, and people had really clever ways of making a comfortable situation for themselves and the trick-or-treaters. And so I just left that feeling sort of impressed that even though everybody feels differently, that we were still able to. It was different. It was like some of the big haunted houses that are traditional in the neighborhood weren't being run, and I just felt like people made a really comfortable environment without a lot of rules and mandates. And with these coming down, um, from a state level, I feel like it's, it's, it's confounding what I think has already sort of been a successful process.
Okay. Well, a lot of these, uh, are outside the scope of the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board as well. So, um. Any public comment from the public this evening? I think we are lacking the most important ingredient for that, which is the public. As I don't see anybody on here. So any public comment from the board this evening?
I do.
Ms. Adams.
Okay. Um, I'm just thinking of the election, and there's also a specific thing, um, to town. Um, a Thomas Jefferson quote, he said, "We do not have government by the majority. We have government by the majority who participate." Um, and so I, I think that's, you know, um, a segue into my public comment. I didn't make it at the beginning because I had the, um, letter to read, but I received several messages, um, from parents, and then there was also an email distributed where a member of the school committee, I think, had said, um, some things on TikTok. I'm not on TikTok. I never saw what was actually said, but they felt frustrated that they wouldn't be represented. And I think what's important as we go into tomorrow and have, you know, new officials or repeat officials and in our own roles, both, um, you know, school committee, Board of Selectmen, that we're really not just representing the people who agreed with us and voted for us. We're not just representing the people who voted against us, but we're representing everybody. And in the case of the school committee members, most importantly, they're representing children, and they don't have a vote. And so I hope that everybody who sits in an elected position keeps a very open mind that they're not just here to think of the people who agree with them, or they're not just here to participate with the people who agree with them, but they're really here to look at it more holistically. And, um, somebody asked what can be done. We're, we're, we're so upset. And I said, basically, it's participate. We're, we're here through election. We're here through a process, recall, things like that. And so I think participation is the key to everything that people seek from government.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Well, make the motion first.
All right.
All right. All right, uh.
Wait. Sorry.
Yes.
The Parks Commission joint meeting.
Oh, yes. We, I asked people to think about which, which, would you rather have the Parks Commission come to our meeting? Uh, or us go to their meeting? They, they were more amenable to us going to their meeting. I don't have a choice. I don't have a preference one way or another. I offered that to the board last week. So does anybody have any preference about either of those two?
The date of their meeting, please.
Hold on. I don't have it memorized. Sorry, I have to wait for my monitor to come on. That was a good last catch there, Madam Town Manager.
Sorry to hold up adjournment, but.
Is it on the town website, Tom? I can look it up though.
I thought it was December.
That I got, so let me just, uh, let me just pull it up. So hold on one second. So there, there, the Parks Commission's preference is December fourteenth at their meeting. And if that's not possible, the December first meeting of our meeting.
I'm unavailable on the fourteenth.
Everybody available on the first?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We'll say the first. Okay. Because we, we want to have everybody involved. So, uh, I will respond back. In fact, I will make a note to respond back to the first. Twelve, one. I will respond to the Parks Commission and the, uh, the skate park organization. Okay, now I think we're set for an adjournment, which was motioned and seconded. Uh, Ms. Adams.
Hi.
Mister Jeffries.
Hi.
Mister Marino.
Hi.
Mister Dwyer. Mister Dwyer. Can he not hear?
Yeah, my internet connection was unstable. So if you ask me, aye.
Okay, there you go. All right. All right. And I for myself, uh, I'm sure everybody's, well, not everybody. I'm sure many people are gonna be up late. I'm sure many people are gonna be up late. So, you know, have a breather, pace yourself. Maybe pass tonight, maybe who knows when, but, uh, we'll find out soon enough. In the meantime, take care of yourselves, take care of each other. Have a good night. We'll see you next week.
Night, everyone.